Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission Meeting. Call or roll?
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson, Johnson, Kibler.
Yes.
Menham, Offredal.
Yes.
Ponte Nila.
Yes.
Trudell, Wolf.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Erickson, Ziegler.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
That will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of the October twenty twenty-five Regular Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Looking for a motion for approval of the October twenty twenty-five Regular Meeting Minutes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got motion to approve by Vice Chair Bowman, second by Commissioner Menham. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the discussion. Call or roll?
Bowman.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Ponte Nila.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to five point one, Rowan Second Edition Public Hearing Request by Dean Feist, representing CMF Builders LLC, owner for preliminary plat on a property zoned R one Single Family Residential District. Legal description for the property is lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, Rowan addition to the city of Minot. Property address is eight, twelve, twenty, one hundred, one oh four, and two hundred, twenty-seventh Street Northwest. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. Here you can see the subject property bound in black with a three hundred foot notification area in pink. It is located in Western Minot. It's just south of New Fire Station Five. They are proposing a preliminary plat to realign the right-of-way adjacent to this subdivision. Here you can see the proposed plat and the changes to the right-of-way. Planning had run into some issues with permitting on these properties. They get gotten too shallow. A portion of this road has already been constructed, and so what they're looking to do is to continue to construct the existing road as it had been constructed, and this is a change to the amount of right-of-way they would need to actually construct that road. The current zoning of the property is R one Single Family Residential District. Adjacent, you have Ag, C two, R two, and R three. The future land designation is suburban residential. There's also public and institutional neighborhood, commercial, and urban residential adjacent. Here you can see some aerial photos. This is looking south towards the properties. And here we're looking north. Here is staff finding of fact. It can be found in the staff's written report. Planning Commission has the authority to hear this case and recommend to council whether it should be approved, denied, or approved with or without conditions. Staff recommendation is that staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt staff finding of fact and recommend city council approve the major subdivision preliminary plat for Rowan Second Edition with the following conditions: That roadway, the roadway section shall match existing roadway to the south. Sewer connection fees are required for future development. Sidewalks are required, and a development agreement must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
So that road going south, that's from Fourth Avenue going south or from second, whatever it is going south? Or the fire station?
It would be south of the fire station.
Okay.
To match the existing road design south of the fire station.
That little chunk there by Fourth Avenue, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Okay, anybody wish to speak against this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations and findings of fact.
Second? Got a motion to approve by Vice Chair Bowman and a second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion?
I'd like to just go ahead and add, great to see this project coming forward. I know we approved some of these properties and replats and designs and everything a few years ago. What I really like to see is the infill of maximizing existing neighborhoods and making sure that we're using all of our spaces to build homes for folks to live within city infrastructure and boundaries. So, well done.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, call or roll?
Bowman.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Ponte Nila.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to five point two, Whitetail Ridge Third Edition Zone Change. Property hearing request by Troy and Linda Langmac, owner for a preliminary plat on a property zoned R one Single Family Residential District and AG District. The applicant is also requesting a zoning map amendment from AG to R one Single Family Residential District. Legal description of the property is lot fourteen, block one of Whitetail Ridge addition to the city of Minot, Ward County, North Dakota, outlot eight of the southwest quarter, northwest quarter, section eight. Township one fifty-five north, range eighty-three west, Ward County, North Dakota. Subject property address is fifty-eight oh nine, twenty-sixth Avenue Northwest. That will turn it over to staff for finding and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. Again, you see the subject property outlined in black with the three, oh, six hundred foot notification area denoted in pink. We are in the ETJ here. We're actually right up against the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction line. That is the blue line on your map. So, the applicant is looking to purchase land that belongs to the Boys and Girls Ranch to increase the size of their yard is what we have going on here. So, it's just a plat to incorporate that. The zone change is because the property they're purchasing is Ag. They want to incorporate it into their existing R one lot. So here you can see the plat. It is taking off of that broad acreage and plating it into the residential subdivision. Here is the zoning map. The current zoning designation is R one and Ag with rural residential also adjacent. The future land use designation for this area is rural residential. Here you can see a photo of the property. This is facing south. See the existing home lot on the left-hand side of the picture. And here we have another photo facing east, and you can kind of see the back of the property in the Cooley area that is being purchased by the existing property owner. Here is staff finding of fact. It can be found in staff's written report. Planning Commission has the authority to hear this case and recommend counsel whether it should be approved or denied with or without conditions. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt staff finding of fact and recommend approval to the city council for a zoning map amendment from Ag Agricultural District to R one Single Family Home District. And Planning Commission also recommend approval of the preliminary plat without conditions. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dietrichson, just out of curiosity, this will be incorporated into the R one plat that's already there? Is that correct?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, yes, it would be incorporated into that existing R one subdivision, and that is the reason for getting a zone change so that it's part of the R one subdivision.
Now, just, and I don't know if there's a correlation here, that's why I'm asking, but Ag land is taxed differently than R one land, or does the zoning not matter for tax purposes? Do you know?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, assessments are based on use of the land.
On use?
I couldn't tell you exactly what the difference in the tax assessment would be on the property. It would likely be changed from Ag to residential vacant property, but it's taxed based on the use. Your primary tax burden comes from your improvements, not your property.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes, in attendance, wish to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Any wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Who got the second there? Okay, so we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Ziegler and a second by Commissioner Wolf? Right? Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, call or roll?
Bowman.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Ponte Nila.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler. Motion carries.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Miscellaneous and Discussion Items. Six point one, do you want to?
I can take this. So, as you may or may not know, I also provide staff support to the city's daycare committee. This is, the committee is chaired by Elder Woman Olson. One of the things that they have been discussing in this committee is how we can increase the access for childcare in the city. As we know, we are underserved, and it is expensive, and it is difficult, and waiting lists are long. And so they're exploring all options available to try to increase the availability of childcare facilities within the city of Minot. One of the things they have asked for me to explore, and I told them that I'd have to bring it to you because anything we do would require a text amendment and would likely be done under conditional use, which falls under your purview, is allowing for what our LDO would consider a commercial daycare center to be placed in residential homes. So we have two classifications of childcare. We have home-based daycares, which are, I live in the home and I operate a childcare center out of my home. And then we have commercial childcare centers, which are, I have a place in a strip mall or a standalone commercial building, and I operate a commercial daycare facility out of that. What they're asking is, under what conditions would the Planning Commission issue conditional use permits to operate a childcare center out of a residential home where the owner is not the occupant of the home? They would just purchase a home, convert it into a daycare facility, and operate a daycare out of it. Currently, this is not allowed under our LDO. It's very specific that daycare centers shall not be located in non-residential buildings, or shall be located in non-residential buildings, churches, indoor recreation facilities, education facilities, primary, secondary. So, we see a lot of churches, we see a lot of, you know, preschools that also have daycares, things of that nature, and then you have your daycare centers that are just operating out of leased space in a commercial building. I guess staff would bring their primary concerns with this would be traffic and parking. You're talking about operating this out of a residential neighborhood. And what conditions would we be, you as a commission, be looking at imposing in order to allow that, to remove that line that they shall be located only in commercial buildings? There would be building code issues associated with this. They would be required to comply with all building code requirements. That would just, I mean, you've seen that condition. Staff brings it to you most of the time. Anytime we're looking at a use inside of a building that's not necessarily built for that. So that, I would recommend that we include that condition in all conditional use permits as well. But I guess this is just an open discussion. They asked me to bring it to the commission and talk to you as commissioners about how you would feel about these types of conditional use permits, what you feel they would need to look like in order for it to not generate nuisances within that neighborhood if we were to allow this type of use to be done. With that, I guess, stand for questions. We can have a discussion.
I got one, I guess. Internal staff or internal departments, have they had any feedback on this? Fire chiefs, I mean, are we sprinkler systems? Are we do, I mean?
We, I've reached out to them. I've had, you know, high-level discussions on this, and the answer is, well, they got to meet code. And that really depends on the occupancy. Like, how many, how many kids are we talking? Are we talking about you're gonna have a house with ten kids in it, or are you gonna have twenty-five kids in it? And that would greatly change the type of codes that would be applied because there's occupancy classifications within the code. That's what they kept coming, well, that depends on what it ends up being classified as. Is, you know, it's difficult to answer that question because if you buy a thirteen hundred square foot home and you could have ten kids in it, the building code requirements are very different than a five thousand square foot home with twenty-five kids in it. Sprinklers may end up being a requirement of building code, depending on occupancy.
Are they a requirement right now in a certain commercial setting for a church and anything else?
At eighteen.
At eighteen, okay.
So if you had a commercial daycare center with eighteen plus staff.
One question for a conditional use permit that I would have would be about traffic and impact within the neighborhood and safety for the other residents that are there. So I guess, just thinking off the top of my head, one requirement that would be required by me or that I would really like to see would be a traffic impact assessment done so we can see what is the impact on the neighborhood. There might be areas on the fringe of town where there's a lot more space, the lots are larger, it could be negligible. But there are also areas in the core neighborhoods of our city that it would be a really big impact and a big change in lifestyle for family or for families and individuals living there. The other thing that I would also kind of expect is that if there is any traffic signage or changes that is deemed necessary by that traffic impact assessment, that would be the financial responsibility of the applicant and not the city.
Chairman Offredal, Vice Chair Bowman, that was kind of what we as staff had kind of bounced around to as we had thought about this as well. It could, there are areas where it may have little or no effect, but there are areas, like my neighborhood, it would have pretty big effect on, I mean, it's already pretty busy trying to get out of there to get kids to CLC in the morning, you know?
And I will say then, to kind of counter, one of the things I really appreciate about this effort, though, is that, you know, by and large, our residential neighborhoods are very dormant between eight AM and five PM when everyone is at their places of employment. And so it is great to, I think, activate and turn these dormant areas into economic viable, you know, entities. But I think there's going to be pain points at that eight AM and five PM transition point that would really need to be considered.
So it's also important to point out that outdoor activities are already restricted to eight AM to nine PM. So, I mean, the the noise concerns were also another concern that we brought up. A condition that Dan and I kind of bounced around is would we require like a solid wood privacy fence in around the play areas? It could change the, we'll call it acoustic dynamics of the neighborhood. Kids outside playing. In my neighborhood, there's kids outside screaming and playing all the time, but another eighteen kids in the neighborhood would, might change that dynamic a little bit, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dietrichson, and I think this comports with Mr. Bowman's question. That has to do with traffic. And, you know, we've run the gauntlet of trying to get daycare when our sun was coming up and flood and everything else. And I, and as I recall, some of the concerns with a commercial daycare structure is that you have to have closer relationship between the minders, the number of minders on location, and the kids. Like, for baby infants, you have to have a one-to-one. So I almost think we'd need to know the the actual plan, what the square footage is and how many people, kids as a maximum would be on this, in this place, before we could determine even what kind of traffic of minders or tenders or daycare providers there would be.
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, that is somewhat, well, there's two things that come into play there. The licensing is handled by the county. The county social services office handles licensing of daycares, and they would have their set requirements for child-to-staff ratios. We could simply just put in there that they need to meet, it's already in there, the daycare providers must be licensed and adhere to all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. So that would fall under local regulations and state regulations. As far as parking goes, we do have a daycare center parking minimum. It is one space per employee, per peak shift, plus one space per six children of licensed capacity at the facility. So that is our current parking requirement. It would be difficult to meet in a residential neighborhood without making significant changes to that lot.
Particularly if you had the toddlers or the infants, which require one-on-one relationship between daycare provider and infant, you're not going to have one space per six. You're going to have six to six in the worst-case scenario. So knowing usage a little more would, I think, allow us to make a decision? Or you're saying this is just somebody else's decision?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, that is why, as staff, we are absolutely recommending this be a conditional use. That allows you to assess it as a commission on a case-by-case basis and look at, okay, this, they need to provide you with their letter of intent, and they need to tell you this is exactly how many staff we plan to have, how many kids we plan to have. This is our site plan. We could tie them to a site plan. That would be the recommendation of staff.
So this is just a preliminary touchstone to see how we might respond to it before they come with a request?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, they are looking for me to write sample language of an LDO text amendment of we have these, you know, use-specific standards written into our LDO for all different kinds of uses. Daycare centers being one of those uses where we already have use-specific. So we would add M three for commercial daycare centers located in residential structures, and we, as a commission, and, well, ultimately, city council passes text amendments, but these are the baseline conditions that would need to be met. And then it's also a conditional use permit that can be assessed case by case and conditions applied based on your letter of intent and what you're trying to do and what lot and structure you're trying to do it in.
Is there a rationale for commercial daycare centers not being allowed to be put in residential structures or just an omission?
It was done purposely by the zoning ordinance steering committee.
Why? The reason?
I'll let Chair, I'll let Vice Chair Bowman come in. I was there. So I'll just kind of share the rationale there.
I think it's important to note that this is not all daycare facilities, like an in-home daycare is definitely allowed in residential areas. But it's the shift into commercial daycare and just the scope and scale that that shift changes. So it seemed like a really easy at the time carte blanche decision to say, why would you put a commercial place in a residential area unless there's demand? Which now this committee is coming back and saying, we have demand and we want to address this directly. So I think it's very normal for communities our size to say, why would you put a commercial operation in a residential area like this? But now we're being asked for the delineation or the change to it.
Through a conditional provision to allow them to try it and be checked on to make sure they abide by the strictures of a commercial daycare structure within a residential space?
Yeah, and I think if I'm understanding correctly, within the hopes of, you know, clearly what we have right now isn't working, or not that it's not working, but we have an opportunity to maybe make it easier for people to get into the market, and that's, I think, what the committee is wanting, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
Chairman Offredal, Vice Chair Bowman, yes, they're trying to lower the financial threshold, I believe, to get into this market. If I could just add one more point, as the city planner and thinking of the city holistically and all of the things that are happening in the city, another point that I would make is we are also in the midst of a huge housing shortage, especially that missing middle starter home. Homes, and the demand is high and it will skyrocket with the announcement of a large economic development in the form, project in the form of that pig iron processing plant. They're looking at some six hundred employees. coming to town, either hiring from in-town or people coming to town to take these good, high-paying manufacturing jobs. And then you add on top of that the Sentinel Missile Program upgrades that are approaching. Uh, that's a federal program. It might be three years or ten, you, you don't know, but it is coming. It is going to happen. The, the funds have been appropriated for it. Um, our housing situation is not good and houses are not getting built as fast as we need them to already. Um, I don't know that this would make a huge impact on it, but it would have an impact on that housing shortage. I just wanted to add that, that was one of the thinkings that I had had because it is my job to look at it as a whole and how this could have ripple effects through other markets as well.
Um, so then I, I think if you're looking for guidance or, or input from us, I would also just ask that um, if you, or when you create sample language, um, I, I know our LDO has a lot of off-ramps for people to prove or demonstrate um, parking availability or access through multiple different ways. Um, and I'd just like to make sure that we point out that being located in a residential area, there is a very strong possibility that people will just be walking their kids there and will not have the same demand, or there may be individuals who are walking to this place within their neighborhood for employment already, uh, as opposed to leaving a residential area to go to a commercial area. So I just want to make sure that that's factored into the considerations or the language.
Uh, Chairman Offordall, Vice Chair Bauman, we would make sure to add in that demonstrated parking would be allowed. If they have a letter of intent and they know that, you know, half of my clients are residents of this neighborhood within two blocks and fall within what, what a shared parking agreement would allow as a walking shed. That could be incorporated into the plan as well.
So Mr. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Diedgerson, again, just uh, this is not, you, you're looking for some ascent to craft language for a conditional use request? This is not the request?
Uh, Chairman Offordall, Vice, uh, sorry, uh, Commissioner Kibler, no, this is not the request. This is, I, I the committee asked me to bring it to the planning commission to have a discussion with you as commissioners because you are the decision-making body on conditional use permits. So ultimately, I mean, you could be appealed to city council, but you generally make the decisions on what conditions are applied to these conditional uses. So what would be the conditions that you guys would be thinking would need to be incorporated into this conditional use permit? Again, the, the purpose of a conditional use permit is it's allowed by conditions and those conditions are supposed to mitigate any potential nuisance that this business could create within that residential context.
So, so right now, none of the neighbors know this commercial daycare center is being proposed. You've not sent letters out or notified anybody?
Chairman Offordall, Commissioner Kibler, no, no, no centers are actually being proposed at this time. You wouldn't even be a, it, it wouldn't be an allowed use. You couldn't apply for a conditional use permit now. We would have to add language to make this a conditional use which would even allow people to apply for something like this. Right now, it is a, is a not, it is a not permitted use in, in residential neighborhoods, in residential structures. So they're looking for crafted sample language that would actually allow for this to even be proposed.
I, I would, having lived through the daycare crisis here in Minot with so few places for kids, I would be for anything that would help alleviate this problem, which is probably doing nothing but growing. But I would be respectful for what the neighbors felt about a commercial daycare center being put in their neighborhood.
I was gonna say, I agree with that because when a potential business comes to us, there's gonna be a room full of people from the neighborhood saying we don't like that language or, so I do think, you know, parking and occupying and zoning are, um, checking off the right boxes is very important for that, so.
And Chairman Offordall, I made it to the commission, i- it's, it's, that's what conditional uses permits are for. You get that letter of intent, you get that site plan and you can look at it at a very granular level and you can look at the adjacent properties and, I mean, we, we've gone so far as to require you put a fence on this side of the property before. You can really get granular in your conditions to make sure that, um, you're not creating nuisances. I, I think we can all agree daycare is a significant problem. Access to childcare is a barrier. There are so many single-income families out there where you have an educated second parent and it, childcare has become so prohibitively expensive that even college-educated one parent is staying home because they can't make enough to offset the cost of childcare. If you have a two or three-child home, it has gotten to the point where you, you're not making enough money to make it worth it to go out to the market and work. Um, you know, you, you're gonna go out and work for five bucks an hour after childcare costs, you know? And, well, are you gonna, you're gonna let somebody else raise your kids for five bucks an hour? Is the decision that some people are making and it's gotten, it has gotten that prohibitively expensive. We, we've at the childcare committee, we've heard multiple testimonies from people about like, my partner is at home because even college-educated, they're not making enough. We've got three kids and one of them's an infant and the cost is prohibitive. They just stay home.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Diedgerson, along those same lines, and I'm not recommending anything and not, not gonna put forth a motion, but based on what I remember from the daycare concerns expressed to me by the leadership in commercial daycare centers, this tells me that if you're gonna have one employee space per six children, then one of the restrictions would have to be on the number of infants that could be housed in a daycare center, which in a commercial setting require a one-on-one relationship. You'd have one provider per one infant, whereas in a private one, you don't have to have that.
Chairman Offordall, Commissioner Kibler, it's, it's important to note that it's one space per employee, per peak shift plus one space for every six children. So if you have six infants and you have six staff, you, you're si- uh, you, so you have six staff, you need six spaces
Yes.
for the staff, plus an additional space because you have six children. So if you have twelve infants, you'd need twelve spaces plus two. Um, I, I don't think that infant care is gonna be a great business model in this context.
No.
Um, just because of that, unless we modify those parking requirements or if they can show a demonstrated parking or if they're adjacent to someone, they could do a shared parking agreement, you know, if you, if you bought one that was across from, say, a grocery store. Well, the grocery store parking lot is usually, for the most part, empty during the day. Their peak hours are off of daycare. The kids are, you pick the kids up from daycare and you go to the grocery store and you go home. So they maybe be able to do something like a shared parking agreement with an adjacent commercial property. If there's a church or a grocery store or something else that is off-peak during the day. Um, there, there's opportunities to do things like that within the city too. We can get creative with these applicants depending on their site. We, but trying to put, you know, fourteen parking spaces on a residential lot would likely be prohibitive just in project cost, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, how's that gonna make childcare affordable? They're gonna buy a house in a neighborhood to make a daycare out of.
Chairman Offordall, Commissioner Wolf, the, the goal is it to reduce that, you know, entry-level cost. A com- purchasing or leasing a commercial building is more expensive than, say, purchasing a residential structure. It is the thought process they are operating on. The, the, apparently the profit margins are thin on childcare. Believe, as expensive as it is, the profit margins are very thin. When you, you have to pay your staff enough to make it worth it for them to come work for you and overhead costs, I think this is something they are thinking could decrease their overhead cost in, in building space. Leasing commercial space is much more expensive than purchasing residential space.
And I know often just, uh, they don't even lease the space. It's space is given to them gratis by churches and different organizations because their profit margin is so thin, which makes me wary of a commercial daycare center purchasing a building in a residential area despite my belief that we need more and more of this kind of stuff.
Chairman Offordall, Commissioner Kibler, it would be, what we would be doing is creating a path through which they could come up with a project. It's up to them to make sure that it pencils out and it's a good business model. Um, but what, what staff is proposing at the request of the childcare committee is would we create this path to make this possibility? Like I said, there's a lot of opportunities around town where you may find a property where you can make this pencil out with a shared parking agreement with an adjacent property and, you know, you're, you may be commercial adjacent. We have a lot of residential properties that are commercial adjacent. And some of those might pencil out. You might find a way to make that pencil out. But it would be up to the business owner to make it pencil out. We're just creating a path.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna start using that phrase pencil out in my vocabulary, but, and I think, I, I think if indeed it did pencil out, I would, I would vote to allow for the possibility. That would be my.
I am by no means an accountant. I can't tell you whether you're gonna make money on this venture or not.
Any further discussion? So I, I guess just to add to that, I appreciate you bringing this forward to us and allowing our input to help you uh, kind of steer your direction on your, your, uh, what do you wanna say that, to your proposal that you're gonna be working? Who, my assumption is, is that once you make this proposal, you'll bring it back for us to dive, dive a little more deeper. This would just kind of a generic discussion to start that process, correct?
Chairman, that is correct. As soon as I have some sample language, I will be, I will be floating some of that sample language to the childcare committee this Friday at their meeting. Um, they will likely put me to task on whatever contributions they have to that conversation and then um, this will likely be an ongoing discussion.
Also, the, the nice thing with the conditional use permit is that, uh, in a sense, you can almost look at these uh, case-by-case and that's the whole process of a conditional use permit and that would, you know, do with the parking and the areas and all that stuff, so. Thank you for bringing it to us and allowing us to give you some, uh, input. We got any further discussion on that? Six point one. Commissioner Ziegler?
Um, just kind of a thought in my head, um, I'd like to see a wider area of neighbors being contacted than within more than a three-hundred-foot zone. Um, it, something like that would impact, commercial business would impact more than just that close of a radius of the housing.
Chairman Offordall, Commissioner Ziegler, we have never placed a use-specific requirement of a broader notification area. Um, I would likely have to bounce that one off of legal, but it is something that I could explore while we are doing the crafting of that sample language.
That's what I'm asking for, yeah. Just see what we can do.
Okay.
Um, another thing to consider, I think, would be if there are sidewalks in the neighborhood or not and how that would impact traffic and such. As, you know, we have some neighborhoods that don't and that's gonna affect, you know, can they walk in or not safely?
That would likely be covered under that traffic impact study, but we could, we could focus on that on a case-by-case basis uh, as we're reviewing the site plans as well.
Any additional discussion? Again, thank you and, uh, I guess we can move on to six point two. Is this you as well?
Yeah, that's right, I got this.
Two thousand forty comprehensive plan update, city staff. Mr. Dan, and you're up?
Thank you, Chairman Offordall, and members of the commission. Um, this is just a very quick update. I know some of you probably, um, are new enough that you haven't seen the comprehensive plan yet. And so this is just a very quick overview. I'm more than happy to explain to you and go into more granular detail. There are thirty-one goals in total and I'm not gonna go through them all tonight. Um, but if you're curious about them, just feel free to reach out and I'm more than happy to give you the list. So what is a comprehensive plan? It's a city's guide to community, physical, social and economic development. It creates a long-term vision for future planning and community decisions. It guides development decisions within city limits. A lot of the things that we do, we bounce off the comprehensive plan as it's baked into our findings of fact. Um, and it sets other planning efforts like long-range transportation. Um, we did a community survey to kind of craft this plan. Um, this is just a, a, like I said, a highlight of it. We had about a thousand responses and these are the things that people said were very important to them. Um, who, who is supposed to do this plan? Um, as staff, we are tasked with doing most of the, the grunt work and, and executing it with you all and city council being our kind of taskers and, um, approvers. So here's our implementation summary. So out of the thirty-one goals in total, um, we have started or implemented rather, because some of them are ongoing goals, so it's not just started or finished. It's are we, are we doing it in, in his, in our code? Um, that would be forty-two percent, fifty-eight percent aren't started. Um, I've broken them down by costs. We have hit over half of the minimal cost categories and we, as we go up in, in cost, obviously, it's harder and harder to get these done. They require massive community efforts. One of them, for example, is like creating a plaza downtown, which would be amazing, but also incredibly expensive. And the land would have to be bought and all that would have to be developed. So um, with that, I will stand for questions.
Vice Chair Bauman?
Um, thanks so much for doing this. I, uh, appreciate all of the work and the effort that goes into it for our entire development um, staff and all the work that you do into that. I think for the sake of conversation and making sure that we're all on the same page, I'm wondering if you can pick out, um, maybe a goal or two in each one of the categories of, uh, maybe what we're moving towards, what we can move towards, where we can push ahead or, or go from there. Maybe you're gonna talk about it later. I don't know if your, is your presentation done, Dan?
Um, I had all the, the goals hidden, so I'm gonna unhide them and I'll, I'll bring it back up.
Sounds good. I think, uh, if you can pick, you know, two or three of maybe the, the most prominent or the most urgent or the ones that are coming down the pipe, um, that would be great to know, just so we can all move in the same direction together.
All right, so in land use, we have, um, probably one of the most pressing ones would be to work forward to consider and evaluate the need for zoning regulation changes that will benefit infill opportunities. Um, these considerations are not limited to context-based zoning, limited form-based zoning and modifications to planned unit development zoning. These, this would allow us the flexibility in the zoning code to be able to accommodate lots that were platted in the nineteen hundreds and things like that. Um, this body already does a lot of this. Um, this is one of the goals that you kind of just pick up and keep doing, like we have approved variances. Um, the, earlier this year, um, I brought you a variance for Forty-seventh Street Loop. That's over by Nedrose High School. Um, there was a plating error that kept those There was a plating error that kept those that side of that street from being able to be developed and we were able to to fix that. And so it's an example of a good ongoing goal. For transportation, we've actually implemented them all. For housing, we I think our biggest thing was completing the housing study that showed us we have a huge need for single family homes. We have a very good stock of apartment houses that was overbuilt during the boom. But we haven't, we haven't been able to build a large, single family housing development since about twenty eleven or in that range from the flood. For public services, it would be to preserve property for a future sewer treatment plant and to and to protect it from incompatible uses as well as extending our ETJ to be able to properly regulate our sewage lagoons. For parks, I think the the one we've talked about before is providing and enhancing public access from downtown to a riverfront trail, ensuring a connection is available through the flood wall. That would allow students at MSU to get to downtown and vice versa and to get around town better. For economic development. We have a satisfaction satisfaction survey that we always do year round to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our our shareholders. And I mean, we also have in this goal, the improved bicycle pedestrian connection between downtown and Minot State. And then the outdoor plaza would be would be a great one. For the community character, this body, I believe it was either last year or early this year where we did the gateway overlay district. That is CC one, develop a unique coordinated highway aesthetic that welcomes visitors and conveys a sense of arrival. CC two, we did, we've already created the gateway corridor overlay zone. And we look forward to having a session with you guys on how to use it and what it should say in it. We kind of have the bones built, but we gotta flesh it out. And with that, that is the last kind of section, I know it's a lot of goals, like I said, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Dan, if I could just ask a question, maybe you and and Doug. I heard tell that Bismarck is developing this altogether new relationship to its extraterritorial zone. One that like unlike here and there too, would allow for more representation given taxation. And I assuming you're talking to everybody in the state and beyond about these issues. Have you heard about this movement in Bismarck to enfranchise in part the extraterritorial zone and have we considered doing anything like that here? Because it was one of the master plan comprehensive plan subcategories on the first slide.
Chairman Offdal, Commissioner Kibler, um, I've heard both conversations at a high level. Um, I I I think like the rest of the planning departments in North Dakota, Bismarck is taking the lead on this and we're gonna see where the dust settles on that, you know, because they they they're the ones that are kind of stumbling through the dark and having tripping over everything and finding all the legal stuff and they're taking the lead, I think the rest of us are gonna kind of watch how it goes and I I I don't think that that would be something that this commission or the council would be opposed to looking at if when Bismarck has figured that all out and see how that works within the dynamic of their community.
Okay, but we're minding it, we're watching it to see what they do.
We're watching it, but we're gonna let them be the guinea pigs on this one. They're doing they're doing the legwork, it doesn't make a lot of sense for the rest of the communities to go out and do the same work that they're doing, they they've taken the lead on this, so the work is happening, they're looking at it and if it turns out that it's it it's a great strategy and it really enhances their community. I don't see why we wouldn't explore it for ourselves as well.
Yeah, thank you.
But so we're gonna let Bismarck pencil that out for.
We're gonna let. We're we're talking about hundreds of hours of staff time, legal time, all of this stuff, doing this work. It doesn't make sense for us to spend that money when another community that's falls under the jurisdiction of the same century code as us is already doing it. Let their legal department figure out century code on that one and then we'll we'll find out what happens at the end.
Vice Chair Bowman.
Mr. Falconer, I want to say thanks and and great job, I appreciate the time that you put into this, it's great to just kind of have this continuing education going on. In your presentation, this is now the second time that we've talked about especially starter home mid level housing need within our community. And I know that we all give of our time, the first Tuesday of every month, soon to change to the second Tuesday, because we want to make our community better. If there is anything that we can do from the planning commission level of helping make development and home building in our community better, please let us know. I think we're ready to do that work, if there's work that we can do at this level, I know much of it will be done at your level and then come to us, but it would be great to see this be a moment in time where we said, yeah, before this, we were really struggling with it and then we made these changes or we really acted on this and after that we improved it for our community. So I think I'm just manifesting that, throwing it out into the universe in the hopes that we continue to have some conversations and make some good changes within our community to address that so that we don't have to continually talk about the the missing middle of our housing market.
Chairman Offdal, Vice Chair Bowman, I will tell you that the directive within the planning division from me has been we need to build these relationships with our developers. We need to change that view from development unfriendly to development friendly, we need to meet with these people, we need to talk with them, we need to hear their concerns. And when their concerns are valid, we need to take action to make sure that that's addressed, so. We we as a staff are are making that effort, so.
Thank you, any further discussion on six point two? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to six point three, parking minimums.
Chairman, members of the commission. We had a parking minimum discussion last year, I believe, where I kind of compared Minot to the city, the surrounding towns and again, I know we have new commissioners on now, so I'll I'll just give a quick summary, what is a parking minimum? So a parking minimum is, we have a table in our LDO that has uses in it and like for example, you'll have like a supermarket use and then we'll say you'll need this many spaces per one thousand square feet. And that kind of guides the developer on how much parking we think they should need. It has become very popular recently to reevaluate these minimums as if they're set incorrectly, they can they can create a lot more parking than what is required. I mean, if you drive around town, you see there's a lot of parking lots, especially downtown. And a lot of times they're empty. In fact, there's a Black Friday challenge to see how full parking lots are on supposed to be the busiest day of the year for shopping. So as you're driving around this Black Friday, just just take a look to see how how full things are. Just some facts that I have here, in the central business district, and this predates zoning, I'm pretty sure, because I can only go back to nineteen fifty nine, is we have never had parking minimums for downtown, so we've never required businesses downtown to have dedicated on off street parking, it's all been on street. In twenty twenty one, Minot lowered a lot of our minimum requirements in the twenty twenty one during the land development ordinance overhaul. And then in the same rewrite also introduced several parking reduction strategies, which we touched on tonight for daycares, that shared parking, that demonstrated parking, all those strategies we have to to take a more common sense approach instead of just a rote number from a table. And then in twenty twenty four, we took a step further and we just removed parking minimums for all industrial uses. The rationale there being these aren't places where people necessarily drive to to shop, they're mostly just employee parking for a for a specific use. And that that employer isn't going, isn't incentivized to overpark their things because it would require them to build larger parking lots. And so to kind of continue that further, is there any other opportunities we could push into? So we're left with residential and commercial now, and those two are a lot stickier than in industrial. So just to consider Minot's unique profile, that shape on the map there is our travel trade area that people are willing to travel to Minot to buy things and so as it as they are traveling from that area, it's all inherently low density, so they're all going to use cars. There's no train, no, you know, bus they can take, so to speak. And even in our own community, we have the numbers here for people who commute in, who commute out and who stay within the city. And so unfortunately, you know, we have a lot of cars and I think we are, we are pretty auto centric and we're going to stay auto centric for a long time. We have eighty four percent that drive alone, nine point nine percent that carpool, two point two percent walk and two point seven work from home. Those are the kind of the highlights there. And so we, as we think about other places we could reduce parking minimums. Obviously, you want to avoid spillover from a commercial person who has built a building and not provided parking that then spills into adjacent residential area, that would be about a worst case scenario there. But if it's a land law, if it's a commercial surrounded by commercial, you have, I know of businesses around town who have underbuilt their parking and then it spills into the neighbor's parking lot as well, and that is also unfair. And so I don't have any specific recommendations today, I was kind of hoping to 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 see what you all think about it. But those are the kinds of things to keep in mind as as we look to lower these standards further. I believe there are some spots we could cut, like one that I thought of was we have a a use for large department stores like Home Depot, Walmart. As they are going to come in and build, they know exactly how many parking spots they need because they they're, you know, national chains and all that. And so they are also gonna be on such a large lot away from other areas that the risk of overflow or overspill is low. And so letting them kind of drive their own parking needs would be a spot we could start. But with that, I'll I'll stand for questions and and discussion.
Thank you, any discussion for city staff? Input, Vice Chair Bowman?
I asked for this one and I so I just want to say, first of all, thank you and great job presentation, providing all sides, I really appreciate that. So to put it into like LDO or L, yeah, land development ordinance language, essentially, what you're kind of talking about with I, which I actually agree with, is that a Home Depot, a C two, a big box store is never going to show up into a community and be willy nilly with their demand projections and how much parking they need. I I I feel like that might actually be an area where we can have a discussion and maybe look at proposed language of in a C two area, if we were to remove, it would allow a larger store, which we know that you know, a parking space has never generated a penny of tax income, whereas a retail store has. So there would be benefit to the community. It also allows and and removes a lot of burdens to make the development easier, but then also gives the developer a lot more flexibility on landscaping and how we can reduce the water management plan and I I just, I feel like there's a lot of trickle down effects to removing some of the requirements on our end and letting an entity that would come into a C two area, which would be very limited in the type of business that would do that, give them because they're gonna have it, the opportunity to build the parking lot that they know they need and want.
Any further discussion?
I would talk for hours if I could, but I think while we're on the the conversation, I do also I I was part of the rewrite for in twenty twenty one when we looked at really drawing down from requirements in especially apartment areas and and those R two, R three higher density areas. And I think we've reached a really good point where we have a lot of flexibility and especially in our conditional use permits or or special CUPs, they are, they're working and I think Blue on Broadway. Some neighbors may have issues with it, but I feel like for the most part that limited parking space has worked well with full occupancy and is still a vibrant part of the community, so I'm pleased about that. C one is another area that I would love to look at, just because I feel like those are going to be neighborhood adjacent and that's a double edged sword and I realize the risk. One thing about parking lots is they kill neighborhood, you it's it's a place you can't be, it's basically this open space. And that's really frustrating when you're trying to build a walkable community where neighbors know each other, where people feel safe being out of their homes and and at the same time, we don't want to have that overspill into the residential areas where all of a sudden a stranger is parking in front of your house for two or three hours while they're at the restaurant or the bar or shopping or at work, so that that might be something that we can look at in the future, but I would love to find a solution, I just don't have it right now. It would be nice to see though if we could make it easier, C one is also going to be our smaller developers, maybe our more independent developers. And that is a really great opportunity to remove the barrier or the burden to those small scale developments if we can, but I don't have the answers, so throwing that out into the universe as well.
Yep, Chairman Offdal, Vice Chair Bowman, yes, C one is our probably least used zone, it's very rare to have, but it is also where the majority of our local grown and you know, looking to start people tend to end up because they can't afford the two million dollar lot off Broadway. And so to come up with some novel or unique or just site excuse me, site specific uses or conditions for those would be worth it.
Any additional discussion?
I would just say, talking about parking, has anyone tried to park at the Parker Center at noon on Saturday?
It's tough, but the good news is the parking ramps are just a a block or two away too, so we we have some flexibility kind of around there, but yeah, the Parker is tough.
If you're able to mobile from that parking ramp to the Parker Center and the Parker Center is for?
Disabled individuals, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, Dan, appreciate both your presentations. Okay. Now, none of these, these are all discussions, so there is no, no input or guidance that we need to get you. Yeah, no votes today or motions, it was just discussion, right?
Chairman, we require no motions, we were just looking for some guidance as we're moving forward on these these research projects that we've been put to task on.
Okay, appreciate it. Any additional miscellaneous or discussion items anybody would like to discuss?
I have one item, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge our newly appointed city managers in the back of the audience today, Tom Joyce is here. Tom, if you like, you want to introduce yourself real quick here, like two minutes tops, he's a talker, so.
So I'm putting him on the time.
How do I get the clock up here?
Chairman Offdal, I'm a little bit like Vice Chairman Bowman, two minutes, really? So hi, just thanks, Brian, I appreciate it, just a quick for for those of you who have I have not had the opportunity to meet, so Tom Joyce, I'm your new city manager, I'm all about one month in. Just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to sit in and listen, I've done this a few times in the past, but not often enough in my former role as assistant city manager, but I really appreciate the discussion. Great job, Dan, on talking through the twenty forty comprehensive plan. These are some of the things as well as that I want to take to counsel and and just ensure that we're integrated and we're synchronized and we're all on the same page, you know, working together. You know, like, you know, Doug was talking about with the childcare committee, you know, sometimes our different roles and responsibilities can appear to conflict and a little bit of a a little tension is good. But, you know, Commissioner Kibler, I'll just point out, you know, I I have the same scenario. When we had kiddo number one, we were living in Northern Virginia, working at the Pentagon and both Caroline and I were still active to the Air Force and we dropped kiddo number one off in residential neighborhood, that's what was available. There wasn't your standalone, commercial, desired child development center, it was a residential neighborhood and I can still remember to this. And I can still remember to this day, the ground floor was a whole bunch of those little rockers going like this, right? Now, they, they met whatever the standard was in Arlington County, and you know, we have our standards. But I, I think the concerns that you all brought up tonight, I, I greatly appreciate, because those are all valid concerns that we'd have to work through, right? Because, you know, you don't want to inconvenience people who bought a house there, or they're living in that neighborhood. At the same time, we understand that there's a greater need in this community for childcare. So this is a great example. I appreciate that all you all are doing, volunteering your time, your, your, uh, your energies uh, to this as volunteers in our city. That means a lot to me, uh, that there are great folks like you that are willing to, again, volunteering your time and expertise and help us all get better together. So with that, um, again, Tom Joyce, your new city manager, I'm here for you. Reach out. I love to build relationships and build more together and develop, and it's a great city we have here. Um, but again, there's always room for improvement, and that's why you're here on the Planning Commission, and we appreciate you. Thanks very much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other additional miscellaneous discussion? Okay, seen none, we'll move to agenda item number seven, adjournment. Meeting adjourned.